Here we go. Mr. Anderson, what do you call the role?
Jennings.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Bramless.
President.
Alderman Grayson.
Present.
Alderman Bell.
Present.
Alderman Hill.
Present.
Alderman Chuck.
Present. And we have a court.
The Delegations giving the last, the nine of six, Merrick. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free to be and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, while the Delegations of the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible and full.
All right. Think the hall coming out this evening? It's like we don't have anybody next door. It is set up for overflow in case we get more
You over there?
Oh, they're over there already, good. We have two seconds left. Item three point O, special presentations. We have none this evening. Item four point O, council reports and requests. Items of community interest or specific request from council members, the city manager to his address at the meeting. Um, anybody on council got anything to say, Jeff?
What sir, I'm doing.
John?
Wes? I'd like to say something if I could, please.
Sure. Your floor.
I attended the, uh, but workshop, uh, meeting on September the second. And we were all here building both rooms. It was a pretty good crowd. When we left, I guess, posted a comment that probably offended some people. And think of what I saw. And the comment was, I thought I just left a clown show. I bet, I bet this one. How everybody just handled. And so I went home and thought about it. And I realized that it was in a full year. So anybody that feels like they were offended or had their feeling heard or anything, I apologize to you. See us put this behind us, get back to work. City Council's got a lot of work to do. They got a lot of stuff under it, Jim. All I can say.
Thank you, Wes. Mr. Grayson.
Uh, no, I'm still waiting for our flood control people to contact us. They have said they would. I had to take them at the word, so I'm waiting on.
And.
I'm good, thanks.
All right, moving on. Item five point O, public hearing and public comments. This is the opportunity for a public to address counsel. Time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the city council and dialogue with the audience is not permitted. Council members are prohibited by law from participating in the discussion or deliberation of items not specifically on this agenda. Okay. Let's see, we'll start right back there. Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Anything? Al?
I'm good.
Anthony? Doug?
Yeah, oh, you know my name? Yeah, yeah, I'm going to speak.
Yeah, you gotta get up to the podium.
You have to say your name and your address.
You have to state your name and address.
Douglas Herberger, uh, four six Seagrove. Yeah, I'm really come to these meetings very much, but, um, you know, there's been so many, uh, bizarre things that I've been saying just even, uh, away from all this and it's, it's, um, it's kind of concerning. Just I'm on the email list and you know, this was a, there was a mayoral election. And then at you there, then you withdrew from it or something like that. I don't know. Whatever happened, you know, and then went back into it. That's very bizarre to me. Okay. And then there was a city manager that was appointed, which there's been no city manager actually. Um, there was a conflict, I think with the police chief acting as city manager. And I'm not getting into the legalities of it, but there is a legality to it. And you know, I find that concerning. You know, this city here, um, dispatches through La Porte. Um, because before they never answered the phone here. Um, with that being said, so La Porte does a great job, but there's no supervisors here for police. Um, I mean, you know, these people don't do, they don't care. And that's my opinion. There's people who don't care. Um, and you know, it, it, it seems like there's something very wrong here. Uh, you know, just on the outside of it all. Um, and I heard that there's a big ruckus here with, um, you know, this other city manager and paying too much money. And I, I mean, you know, the whole thing sounds bizarre. Um, I probably there, there needs to be an accounting of the financial. I don't know if there's been an audit of this place here, but you know, I mean, we all have investments here, hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially, you know? Real estate's not free, right? And, um, you know, again, the, the police situation, I mean, I was, I was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Okay. I've grown, I've, I know police. This is not normal here. I've just, yeah, there, there's no supervisors, there's no nothing, just whoever shows up and whatever happens, happens. Have a nice day. They don't, nobody care, they don't care. I guess that's what I'm saying. That's my thing. So, you know, maybe it's time for, for somebody, for maybe for a new, some kind of revised election. I'm, I'm, I'm not astute into the procedures of that, but you know, maybe some people are just not cut out for it. You know, maybe, you know, maybe somebody could better handle things because there's obviously a lot of friction here. And this gentleman, I, I just came in here and this gentleman is talking about insulting people. He could be the nicest man in the world, but there's something wrong here. And you know, I, I, I think maybe it'd be a good idea to see some fresh faces and, and you know, and, and decisions made. You know, I don't know what could be connected to La Port for police to get a real, I'm using my descriptive terms. You have some real police out here that are responsive, knowledgeable, and you know, there's a level of authority, you know? So anyway, those are my few thoughts there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Uh, see. Help us. Kelly? Text to Kelly?
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening. Uh, Nathan Bennett, thirty-four twenty-two Body Force Drive. I got three things I want to bring up. Um, so I, I have a sewer line break on my house. I'm currently getting it repaired. They should have pulled a permit. Don't worry, don't, you guys come audit me. Um, when I moved in, in March of twenty eighteen, the sidewalk outside of my house was pretty messed up. I have fixed my portion of it and the driveway. I had it re-leveled, but it looks like one is about to go underneath the other. My neighbor's mailbox has begun tilting. Mine has significantly tilted since I have moved in. Um, before I moved in, I was told that it was this way. There was a storm sewer put in and it has since gotten worse since the storm sewer was put in. So only speaking on what was told to me by several neighbors that have lived there for longer than I have, I am concerned that there is a washout underneath this storm sewer. My yard has started to somewhat erode underground, especially between the street and my sidewalk. It used to be level with the curb. Now the grass has started to track and go below the curtain. I can't even hardly cut it with my mower like I used two years ago. Um, my mailbox used to stand completely upright and has since started to lean. I'm not saying it's the city's fault, but I would like the city to inspect the storm sewer properly to ensure that there is no. Um, it has become concerning for myself and my neighbor. I have told him to come speak as well because it's more than one voice, but I would like counsel or whoever our city manager is, have public work support in this to help resolve the issue or at least identify something, um, because I can't go in the storm sewer myself. Uh, my second item, uh, this was brought up by one of our neighbors. I'm sure all of us are aware, heard it outside of just my neighborhood, but there is this constant grinding sound, humming sound from one of these plants. Uh, one of our residents did call and address with the plant manager. They said it would stop, but it was still ongoing. Uh, there was talks of signing petition to get the noise addressed. Um, just kind of bringing it to council's attention, uh, something to potentially look into in the next week or so. This noise does not stop. It has been ongoing for weeks. It's kind of a, well, we're familiar with the boat churn and the hum from the engine. It's a lot louder than that. It could be more abrasive, but it's not, but it is constant ongoing and it's very noticeable outside, uh, even inside at times. Uh, lastly, um, a few months ago, in the midst of changeover from city manager, I had reached out to the city about potentially adding a pickleball port to Circle Park, um, some sort of temporary establishment with no permanent net. Residents would provide their own. I did provide a quote to the city. Um, I would request that council discuss this next time. Um, I have a quote still. I'm sure the individual that quoted me would be willing to provide the work and attempt to do due diligence. I did reach out to multiple companies to try to get multiple quotes, but some didn't offer that service. Others didn't want to take it because it is quite a small job. So I have gotten one good quote from an individual that I would, I would call reputable. Um, but something I think could be worth adding to the agenda and bringing up to potentially vote as a small cost to the city for betterment and, uh, resident enjoyment. And if I need to discuss further, we can offline or at the next meeting, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gata.
Don't just think about that.
Uh, Mr. Barrett.
Andy Barra, one forty-five Shady Lawn. At least I remember my address is, thank goodness. So, uh, I wanted to, first of all, Wes, thank you, sir. You're an honorable man and I mean up the bottom of my heart, as Wes I know. I mean it. I know you, I know you knew. I know you did, sir. And that's, I, I know you's going way back to very beginning when I first moved here, sir. Thank you for that. Anyway, I wanted to bring up the point that I have recently, uh, suggested to the council members in an email that I am, uh, would want to be considered again as a city manager. We can eliminate the process and run back out to the, uh, to, uh, sending out more applications. And in doing so, I felt that I needed to step up because we have somewhat of an issue with the budget and timeliness and all those things. And I've offered to come in at forty thousand dollars, uh, no bonus, our allowance, and I can't remember what else I changed up on there. Uh, but it was something very simple so it could fit into the budget. But I think, and I, I mainly want to do this so that I can get in there. If Troy is going to be sticking around, I don't know all his plans just yet, but I know, and I asked him already, you know, if he would be willing to help me out as I, I make this transition if it happens, because there's a lot to learn in such a short period of time. And I know Troy is, uh, all about police service and, and that I, I feel like I can, I can move into this position with my type of background, but adding to it the, the knowledge that he has and sharing it with me, we can, uh, be, uh, as a team in that. Secondly, it gets everybody here, the council members, an opportunity to see how I work and if this is a fit for us. And I think that's important. I would rather you have do a trial and error with me locally instead of somebody you don't know and you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, uh, and then the other thing is this, uh, this number wouldn't really, uh, cause any issues to my retirement. I might have to pay something, uh, uh, in the fixture because the amount of money has been expended at that point. I hadn't even linked it to, but that's why I want to do that. But Shore Acres is a beautiful place. And I don't know if you saw the survey that we, we put together about Shore Acres. It's all about a community. It's about being by the seaside and what we all share together. The amenities here in Shore Acres. And I would like to make that a big focus of my, uh, uh, possible, uh, possibly taking on the city manager position. Um, it, it's really about, yeah, also to let you know this ahead of tomorrow's meeting. So I don't, I know you'll have a, an immense amount of information to go through, data and stuff like that. But giving you these numbers ahead of time should hopefully, uh, eliminate some of those guess works out of that. I know there's some other things you're looking at, but, uh, I would be honored and I'm available at any time. Um, and if you would like to bring me back in to ask questions about me and, and things that I, uh, I, I feel like are important. And if you rego, if you recall, I was not scorned or upset that I didn't get the position. I, I certainly would have liked to back then, but it's all about getting this community, which we love, and everybody here has attested to the fact that they love this place. Yes, we've had some bumps in the road right now and they've been unpleasant, but, uh, I believe we're all grown up enough. We can get through it. So I thank y'all and I appreciate your time, sir. Thank you very much.
Hey, boo.
My name is Sid Wells. My wife and I own a home at three, three, four, two, uh, Biermar Drive. And I come here to thank the Shore Acres Police Department for some recent, recent work that they did. Their home. Uh, as many of you know and use, uh, there is an offer for a vacation watch when you're out of town. My wife and I travel a fair amount. And so recently we were, we signed up for a vacation watch while we were gone and we were some distance away. We realized something needed to be done with the house. And so I simply called the police department and within fifteen minutes they had it handled. So I thank the police department and Troy
My name is Tammy Highnudson. I'm at one zero zero six Shore Acres. And members of the council, I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about some comments recently made by one of our city council members on social media, which apparently something has been said. On a post by Ricky Boldt, after Boldt, after the city budget meeting, the council member wrote, "We had a great meeting. Only eight or nine showed up and we discussed the budget." The clown posse stated, "Oh, thank goodness." On another residence post where we had simply reminded, where I had simply reminded people that the same council member responded, "We agree, Tammy..." dot, 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 um, explanation. Uh, "I'm about eight, uh, only about eight people showed up. The rest of the clown show stayed at home." Uh, "Thank goodness. Council members, this type of comment is insulting this message and beneath the dignity of this office. When residents are referred to as clown posse or a clown show, it sends message that the voices of the people you represent are not valid. Remarks like this violence residents by discouraging them, discouraging them from attending meetings, participating in discussions or speaking up. These comments have had consequences beyond the initial insult. Instead of fostering respect, they have rallied other residents to support..." When I say they rally, I'm not sure. I think they're, the, the rally took it upon themselves. Uh, "other residents to support the council members, not because of the issue at hand, but simply because they favor this person. When questioned about the remarks, the council member chose to delete the comments rather than take accountability. Yet the behavior continued. Another resident attempted to provoke others and the same council member joined in by a laughing emoji, crying emoji." I want to be very clear. I never had a personal, personal issue with this council member. In fact, I once believed this individual had a kind soul. This is why these comments were so disappointing and hurtful. Since then, I have also had glass intentionally shattered across the very side of my driveway where I pull in each day. Um, I am a supporter of my home and my husband is, is partially disabled and I support that home fully. I can only hope that the fingerprints on the evidence will show me proof one day and give me some answers. Regardless of this, I want you to know, I will not be intimidated or silenced. I am a lion and I'm not a sheep. This will not discourage me from standing up for what I believe in. On a personal note, my family has faced most enormous challenges. My husband at one point had been near death over the past several months and we continue to fight for his health, a struggle that has been ongoing for many years, over ten years. Make no mistake, I do not share this for sympathy, but you need to understand the burden I carry while choosing to still be up here and speak for what I think is right for those that fear they are not politically educated to speak out for themselves. I want a real change in this city. We cannot continue down this path. The rising taxes, increased cost of living, higher water bills, water that sometimes you cannot even drink or reckless spending. We must put an end to this good old boy system that benefits a few of the expenses many. And we must be honest with ourselves. When something has gone wrong in our city, it's rarely the result of a single individual. It's often points to a broader issues of the involvement of others. I am respectfully asking that the city council in question ask for a formal public apology to their residents on the same forum in which it was done on. An apology is only appropriate in trust to show that the city council's coming. Our government works best for when residents feel safe and engaged to fear a ritual or retaliation. I urge you to address this matter. I understand that the city council members may sometimes feel overwhelmed by complaints and frustrations by disagreements, but it is their duty to remain neutral and conduct themselves with professionalism. Respect and accountability are not too much to expect those who are elected or appointed to serve. I'll take my coffee. I mean, getting, getting noticed.
Hey, Mayor?
Richard.
We have one more. What? We have one more. Oh, sorry. Didn't see you.
I may not be the person you want, you want to hear from. Um, I'm actually with Decker disposal. Um, so I wanted to come and, and address, uh, you all, uh, for a couple reasons. Obviously, you know, the, um, you know, the issues that we've had. I didn't want you to think that we just are not, are not here. Um, so, uh, I wanted to also talk, talk to you about, um, we're implementing a text. By the way, I'm Crystal Trahan. Sorry, I'm vice president there. Um, and, and so we are implementing a text alert program. Um, and so it's going to be super easy to sign up. Um, I brought some things, um, just to kind of show you, but also you may have seen, I've even, I, I know that some here have already even signed up for Shore, Shore Acres. So that's really neat. They've seen it on Facebook. Um, but we have a QR code that you can do it. Uh, I, I'm embarrassed to give these out because our printer, of course, didn't act right, right? When I'm trying to leave the office, of course, but, um, either way, you can in fact see these. Um, I'll just show if, is it, is it okay if I, if I, if I, uh, so that was for, so this is, so we have it for, uh, Shore Acres. But what you'll see kind of, and I'll just kind of pass that around if you want to. Um, because I won't take up a lot of your time, but basically what you're looking at here is, um, a, a scan, scan code. So it's three different ways in which you can sign up for these alerts, right? Uh, you can text in a keyword, which yours is Shore Acres. Um, and then there's a QR code and all you need, I don't need any information from anybody except your phone number and that you live in Shore Acres. So we don't, we're not going to take any email addresses or anything like that. Um, that being said, uh, I don't want you to think that, um, that, that is a replacement for good service. Um, it's certainly not. Um, and we, uh, we apologize for the problems that we have had. We have been working really hard. I know, uh, Mayor Jennings has asked us to let him know when we're running late. Um, and so we've, we've done that, uh, as far as, I know Dennis had done that. Um, and uh, as far as missing days in general, we're certainly, uh, have gotten better about that. We, we are doing everything we possibly can to never miss your, your trash pickup. Um, and, and unfortunately, yes, things happen. Um, I know you all, probably a lot, a lot of you know, but I don't know if I'm, am I allowed to address everybody or, because I kind of saw, it's okay.
As long as you don't talk.
Okay, okay. Um, um, so I, I'm sure many people know that, um, you know, we had, we had a, a helper that of course was, was, um, hurt. He had a heat stroke. Uh, so we've really been taking a lot more precautions on that as well because I know people were concerned. Uh, it has been a really, really tough summer for our helpers. Um, so, uh, a lot of times we may end up being late, um, but we certainly don't want to, um, miss you at all, uh, ever. So if we're late at night, it, we're, we're, we are going to get there and these alerts are going to let you know that. Um, so that's hopefully what, I mean, hopefully that's, that will alleviate at least some of the ambiguity. You at least, when you're kind of, what's going on? I don't even know what's happening. You can at least get an alert and say, hey, we're running late, but we will be there. Right? Does that, does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Hello, Dennis.
Of course, of course.
Keep on the ball.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and like I said, I'm going to put this on our website. Um, but, but it's also on our Facebook already. This is probably, this is, uh, okay, um, this one, they put that. So I know, I know that was the problem. My printer, I apologize, but let me grab one of the videos. Yeah, you know, I've, and then of course I will bring some more up next uh, tomorrow, if that's okay, and post one in your office for when people, you know, come in to sign up and try and make it as easy as possible for, for the residents and for, for the council and the management over here. So, um, absolutely. And I will do that for sure. Um, and I try, I'll try and get it, is, or for put it in some of the, some of the local newspapers and all kinds of things. So, but I think it'll at least give people that knowledge. It's better than not knowing anything at all, I guess.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, moving on. If I can find the right screen. Um, if counsel is okay, I'd like to move six point one to the end if I don't have any interjections. So go with item six point two, the police report. And that would be Mr. Harris.
You guys have had this, uh, for a couple of days, I believe. You've had a chance to look at it. The last page is really, uh, the, the stuff that we care about. Two hundred and sixteen home watches, hundred and eighty-six maritime center watches, Houston Yacht Club, a hundred and eighty-six, pier checks, a hundred and eighty-six, and sixty-three citations. We, uh, give you four citations to the gentleman in the blue pickup. So we continue to monitor that situation and hope that gets better. But we think it might now. Uh, but I'm open for any questions you guys may have.
Harrison, you remember we had some problems with kids late at night that had, that appeared crawling around with. Is that low density or isn't it? You've been making checks, I know.
Yeah, we're doing checks. I've not, I've not had any feedback. I don't doubt that we've had to tell somebody to, to, to move along, but we haven't had any problems. No, sir. Not that I've heard.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel?
Uh, we, I could just finish real quick. Uh, as we have a great police department. When somebody says that we're not normal, that's a, that's an accolade to me. I don't want to be a normal police. I, I want to be Shore Acres police and I want to do things for our residents, not like Houston does or Pasadena. So when, when I hear that we're not normal, I'm okay with that. Don't be upset because that got said.
Would you update us on the audit that you're having coming up?
Sergeant Ted Wells doing that audit.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's on the twenty-first. Uh, we expect to do, to be a secure share audit. And, um, I already have everything filled out for, or I'm just waiting for her to show up and, with the audit. But wait, everything seems to be okay though.
We've, we've got the radios in and everything.
Got the radios in. I've contacted the city of Houston, who, who programs for us. Uh, I already sent a, a P O to them. So we're just waiting for them to schedule when they can come out and, and, and put radios up, up and going.
It's a good time to ask about that. Now, I've received a whole lot of criticism, as you know, for the radio, first of the radios. You came to me on August the first and said we had an audit coming up. We would fail the audit if we didn't get the new radios. And we discussed it. We decided to order it and have counsel approve it at the next meeting, right?
That is pretty much accurate. Uh, I don't remember it exactly the same way, but we did need radios. We did have that discussion. I remember saying that they were not happy with, they're not going to be happy with our radios because they're broke and they don't last. And we decided that they were, that they were important to order. We discussed that we were going to buy them anyway in the new budget because that's a commitment that we'd made last year. And we decided together that we could purchase them. That is correct.
And if we had not done that... And if we had not done that, we, they, they would, we, we did it for a purpose of lead time, get it on the way. On eight-four, you ordered them.
Yes, sir.
Eight-eleven, we had a council meeting and it was unanimously approved. Now, do you really think that I had, uh, no knowledge of a $10,000 spending limit?
Say that again?
Were you aware that we had a $10,000 speed, spending limit and that we were just going to blow through it?
When I was city manager, I don't remember ever spending more than that at one time without council's approval. I never, I don't know that I ever faced it. We spent up to $10,000 a couple of times on drainage projects and other things, but, uh, I pretty much stuck by the budget and did what, what was approved. There were some emergencies, obviously with sewer that we had to jump on, so we, we definitely went over that many times.
Yeah, and this was an emergency that we had to get, so that you could pass the audit.
I don't know what would have happened if we didn't have the radios. That's honest.
Right, but, but the, uh, the conversation was that it was going to be a problem for the audits if we didn't do it.
Could have been a problem. Yes, sir.
And then we passed unanimously.
Oh, yes, sir, they did.
I, I just wanted to get that on the record because there's a lot of people with a lot of misinformation out there.
I have to disagree with that because I believe you made the comment along the lines of you've already made the purchase. So we have to go ahead and approve it and then we all voted anonymous, anonymous to be, or not.
That's correct. Um, there are a lot of times when my humor doesn't really, uh, keep people take that seriously for some reason. Anyone that really took that comment seriously, um, I would think that they, uh, they, they maybe don't want to think about it and they maybe just want to attack. But, uh, yeah, the idea that I really thought that I was going to have to pay for those radios, come on guys. Everybody knows the name because they know it. It was passed unanimously because we had to have it. And I knew that and Troy knew that when we ordered them. I didn't sign the contract. Um, Troy did, and, and we knew that council was going to fund that purchase. There was no question about it.
But in all fairness, Mary, you made the call to order them. I did not. You're, you're, you just said that.
I told, I told you to sign the contract that I did.
Yes, you told me to sign the contract.
Right, I told, I told you to order the radios.
Yes, sir.
Because you told me that we would fail the audit.
And you are the city manager. You are my boss.
No, I'm not the city manager. I'm the mayor. And, uh, I'm not even the acting city manager. I'm the mayor and the duties of the office passed to me.
But I work for you, officer.
Uh, actually, as a police chief, you work for that.
Can I just call upon an order so we can get back on topic?
Now, we're on topic. This is the topic.
Thank you.
I have some more questions.
Oh, yes, sir.
On the, uh, on the painting, I'm also getting a lot of criticism for having the police building painted. Uh, was that a frivolous expense?
Uh, the building needed to be painted, no doubt.
Yeah, when I had the painters out here and you asked me to have it painted, I had it painted. But not just painted. We had, uh, it's not like I gave, bounced me off the street, gave them a paintbrush and a bucket of paint. The building needed a lot of maintenance.
The building needed payment, maintenance. I was sitting in your office, somebody showed up. You said they were here to give you a quote for the Public Works building. I said, would you please have them give me a quote for the police department?
Yes.
And then the next thing I know, they started painting.
That's correct. And, and what they did were the wreck. It was completely pressure washed. They caulked all the seams from the hardy planks that weren't done in the first place and water was seeping there. They repaired shutters that were carpenter ant damaged. They took vents down that were rusty. They moved all the rust, put rust prevention on and primed them. They primed the building. So, you know, you got to maintain stuff if, if you want to make it last. And that building was in need of repair and we repaired it. Uh, criticize me, that's fine. You know, that's part of the game. I don't really care. Uh, but, uh, the, it's the personal attacks that, um, it's the personal attacks. And I don't even take that first. This is politics. This ain't, this ain't. Childhood schmuck, this is politics. So it, it, it rolls off my back. Uh, but I do want it on the record that, that it wasn't just a paint brush and a bucket of paint. Uh, so.
It was a lot of work and they did a good job. Well.
They did a great job. Uh, thank you. Gone to Public Works, that was six point three. This is a normal, normal thing that you get. I do want to show you the SCADA system. It is alive. All of them are functioning. You'll see the red one. That was water plant one that went online today. Uh, so they're still working it out. Uh, what this is, if I, uh, obviously the GPS coordinates were a little bit off on this one. That's what, lift station one, which is on the other side of one forty-six. And so we can monitor that. Right now, the level in the station is at three point six six feet. And if you, uh, if it drops below a certain point or above a certain point in the lift station case, it will send an alert out and let the operators know that, uh, that, that there's some, some means there. There's the data for it. You can see that it maintains a fairly steady level of around four feet. So it's, it's working very well right now. And we can go over and then we can check the, uh, water plant two. And right now it's at forty-nine point three PSI. The, uh, the ground storage tank is at sixteen feet. So we know the level of the tank. We know the pressure is good in the city. We know all the pumps are working and there's no, no, uh, no errors, no trips. And again, if there is an error or a trip, it will show us. And we'll go to the one that we just put online today, which is the water plant one. Right now it's at seventeen point eight feet and that's in the, the ground storage tank here. And then you've got fifty, it's a fifty PSI, but you're showing a power field. That's because they, they haven't worked out the electronics on it. They just put this up today. I had a conversation with them, uh, uh, Friday and they told me it was going to be another week. And it might have been a little harsher conversation than I meant because they came out and today and put it online. So, um, it's up and running. Lift station three is the one at, uh, Sunrise and Shore Acres Boulevard is right now at, uh, about six feet. And then our problem child, which is lift station two, is, is, is two feet. But if you look at the, uh, the levels on it, it, it stays at about two feet. The last day. Now, if I were to zoom that out and, and go from previous days when it rained, we would see a, a, a larger variation there. So you, the reason I wanted to show you that is that's what, what we paid for on the, uh, that's your SCADA system. Okay, let's talk about public works a little bit. First time I went over to public works. Cause I, I get criticized for an awful lot of spending, so I want to put all that in context. Um, just, just put it in context. This is public works and this is part of what we saw. This was, uh, old water pipe, twenty-foot lengths. It had just been there for years. They were dry rotted and wasted. This is a new security fence. It went right where that pile of trash used to be. We had to remove that trash to, uh, to put this security fence in. The reason we had to put the security fence in is, I was over there talking to Ray and, uh, uh, Crystal just left. The Decker driver, trash truck driver gets out, hops out, unlocks the gate combination, opens the gate and goes on in. And I asked her, you know, what, what is that? You know, you're supposed to keep the water plant secure. Uh, and, and obviously if wasn't, we have dozens of people with that combination going in and out. So we had to put a security fence to be legal. This is a storage shed we had that we had to clean out. That was files. I found files in there from the sixties and the seventies. It was rat infested. You can see the termite damage. And so we cleaned it out. And that's what it looks like now. You've got more termite damage here and the left picture is the top of the old pole barn, termite damage. Poles were, the whole barn was lifted up and holding up with stop sign poles, the whole barn for years. So we took it out. And now that you see the old barn is gone and I have a security fence and, 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 and another, uh, an area for parking or, or what Ray is going to use it for is, uh, storage. This is the building. When I first walked into the offices over there, it was a total mess. Um, we have, that's what it was. You see the termite damage in the doors. I was told, don't open the door. Why, why can't I open the door to the place? Well, it's rotted. Well, it wasn't rotted. It was termite damage. So we had to get all the termite damage repaired, put a new door in. The front steps were no good. If you walk down them, you, uh, you go through them. Yeah, we had to fix that stuff. And then in the middle of the rooms, that was full of junk. From, from floor to ceiling, full of junk on both offices. We cleaned them out. And now that's file storage so that we can empty two storage sheds that we have down in Seabrook. But I emptied those, bring them back here so we can access them. You'll hear a little bit later about, about, about some audits and how hard it is to, uh, to find files when, when they're in a storage unit in a Seabrook stacked ten high. And so we have enough, uh, storage shelves and units now in the front, front room, front off, it's an office cleaned out. We can use, uh, you, I can, I need to mute everybody. Would everybody mute, please? Okay. That's cleaned out. We can use it. Uh, it's organized. The front office will be, uh, eventually, uh, we can find a table. Put a table in there and people can use it for a, a small conference room. It will hold, uh, easily ten people around a table. Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge office, but it's enough for that. And also it can be used for our auditors. Um, right now there's no internet in the building because rats chewed through it. They chewed through the fiber cable that, that took internet over there. Uh, so we're having to get that repaired. Um, luckily we just have to, uh, splice the cable versus running new lines and everything, but rats chewed through it. When I, uh, uh, there, there were so many problems over there. It was just incredible. The air conditioner, we replaced the air conditioner in twenty twenty-four, but we didn't repair the ductwork. What happened was with the new air conditioner, we were air conditioning the attic. And, and there was condensation. We had new ceiling tiles. Ceiling tiles were wasted. Um, the new ceiling tiles. So we, the painting, they had started painting in there and they didn't complete it. We completed that. So it's a nice building. It's a usable building now. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I get you guys criticizing me because you don't know what we're doing. So I'm trying to explain what context. Um, it's not safe. That pole barn could have fallen at any time, at any time. We had storage in there. Ray worked in there. I first went into the building over there, the lights didn't work. We put lights in. It's unsafe to work without lights. We have lights on the outside now. Uh, uh, they were, they were there. They just didn't work. They weren't repaired. So we repaired all of them. I'll, I'll stop there with that. That, that's your public works report. Um, yeah. The exterior now is being painted. All three buildings will match. The place is cleaned up. When people drive down Shore Acres Boulevard, at least this part won't be an eyesore. That's, that's the whole go there and, and your property taxes, man. Item six point four, the EMS. I don't know that I believe this report, but this is what I received today from, from the board. Only three calls for August and they happen to be two days apart. I'm not sure what to think about that. But, uh, there you go. And the average response time was eight and a half minutes. And it's below the nine-minute national average. And that, any questions on the EMS? All right, item seven point one, Ms. Ramos. We got, uh, any repair, replacement? Or city expenditure of $2,000 or more needs to be brought before council with three quotes for approval? Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Have the motion to discuss from Ms. Ramos. I have a second for Mr. Greeson. All right, and this is a discussion item only. Ms. Ramos, you have the floor.
So I originally brought this, um, in front of council, not realizing that we already have a city ordinance of 10,000. So in our next city council meeting, I would like to amend that city ordinance to possibly a $5,000 spending limit. Which can be discussed when next council meeting occurs. But that was the whole reasoning behind this is I just saw a lot of checks that I had to sign. Not having three quotes, being in construction, you know, I know there's always three or more that are willing to, to do a bid and not use the trusted painter for the city. Um, when, yeah, we have issues with termites and this, that and the other, but any other competitor would have, you know, given us a, I feel like a good quote to repair and, and look at other items rather than, you know, just do an overall inspection and then say, here's my findings. You know, fix what, you know, top three and bring this to council so that a way we can see what we're spending our money on versus just free spending. And free spending is what my mom would call you. Just go and spend money and not really ask for permission. You just ask for forgiveness.
Okay, we can, we can discuss that at the next meeting. If the council look at it.
Mr. Bell, any thoughts?
I have a, uh, a letter from one of our citizens. Uh, it was sent to Ms. Ramos and it was copied to everyone at this table except Mr. Greeson. For some reason, I don't know why. His name was not on.
And, and me, I don't.
No, not you. But he has a lot of good points and he even sent me an email. He would like for me to, to bring these out when we come to discussion. And he got some pretty good points. I mean, he is a, uh, he's a businessman. You can trust him. He's, this is kind of where everybody would know his name. If you, if you heard it, but, uh, I think it's something we need to look at in the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
So we're not discussing this item at all on this meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, personally, I think that the $10,000 spending limit is, is a reasonable one. Um, in looking through the code, I didn't find any, anywhere that it said that we needed three quotes, although I agree that we do need three, but I don't, I think 2,000 is micromanaging personally. Um, I, I think the right thing to do would be to add to the 10,000, uh, statute that's already there and make it so that anything 10,000 above has to have three quotes and be brought to council. It's like it is now. So, and if you can't trust your city manager with $10,000 and to, uh, the, uh, be frugal, be, you know, to make sure we're getting the best value because best price is not always best value. That's, that's the other thing. So, uh, that's my opinion, but, uh, we can discuss that some more.
Mr. Regent?
Uh, I'm in agreeance. It needs to be five K with, uh, with their approvals. Um, you can, you never know what the first guy is going to give you. The better, the second guy may have a better price and find something that the second, your first guy didn't. So I'm, I'm in agreeance. It needs to be amended on that ordinance.
Anything else? All right, moving on. Item seven point two, the second regular meeting, September the twenty-second. I think you probably should, uh, schedule that if you go on, even schedule more than that, but I think you should at least schedule that.
So I'll make a motion to schedule the second regular meeting for September twenty-second.
A second motion.
Motion for Ms. Ramos for the meeting on the twenty-second. I have a second for Mr. Greeson. Anything, uh, anything else? Any other meetings? Any other discussion about it? Just want to make sure. All right, all those in favor of scheduling a second regular meeting on the twenty-second, say aye?
Aye.
All right, and the second regular meeting is scheduled. Now, going to the city manager report, that's, that's what you have in cash. Um, it's difficult. Now, this is of course the time of year where property taxes don't come in until December, January. And so you'll need to, uh, be very frugal on spending. We always are during that period. And then in December, January, we'll have, uh, we'll, property tax come in. About the same thing. All right, item six point one, city manager report continued. Want to talk a little bit tonight, give you some context and then I think some of you will be pleased. I know some of you will be pleased, but we're going to talk about it a little bit before I please you. Um, the transition man. And Troy, when I resigned on April seventh, I resigned. I was home recuperating with, uh, uh, hip surgery. I was home recuperating with hip surgery and facing another one and having other issues I needed to take care of. And so I just decided it was a good time. It was in the spring. You gave you plenty of time. Jerome was around to be, to be a guiding force. It was a good time. So I resigned. Two days later, Troy resigned. So that made it a different situation, I think. So Troy and I and Jerome met on Friday. All this is already on the record on the 20th. If you look at the meeting of the 14th. So we met on a Friday and either one Jerome decided he was, he was moving and he's already moved, actually moving to Mont Belvieu. And so he decided that he wasn't going to get around. And Troy was adamant that, you know, he was done. He was tired. The job was a little too stressful. And that was that. He gave his 90 day notice and and like me, Troy wouldn't back off. So there were three, three people that were in this situation. So we decided that I would return. The plan was that I would be a, it was going to be hard to make, to hire a city manager in 90 days. It really was. And so the plan was that Troy would just we had different definitions of transition, but the plan was that we would transition and and then when that nine days were up, if we didn't have a city manager, then Troy found another job that he could move on and we would be transferring knowledge to the new city manager. And that's the way it's supposed to work. At least we thought it was, our ideas. Way it did work, it's fine, is that on the 20 22nd, we turned over the administrative work to me. Troy's like, I'm out of this. You got this. Okay. And so for five months, I've been working a full-time job for free. And if you think that Mr. Gant's salary was high, you never could afford me, I promise. So whenever I have a job, it was a job, right? Because you know, Troy was city manager until July 8th, but we were transitioning this stuff and duties were changed. It's not in addition to the administration parks that week. So basically Elaine, Bernie, Ray and Diane. And all the administrators, all the parks. That was on April 22nd. We met with the staff. There were some personnel problems and tension that we had to get through. We did that. We have a weekly staff meeting with the me, Bernie and Diane, we talk about wins and we talk about challenges because there's a lot of challenges. I tell you what, you have some you have a couple of very dynamic workers up in the office. When I was when I first came in, I wasn't, I was told a little different story about their abilities. It turns out their abilities are just fine. You just got to let them loose and let them do them. And that was the whole. They just aren't allowed to do their jobs. And they have done them very, very well. All of their tools were out of date. Everything they worked with was so out of date, it was difficult to work with. Their computers were so old that even, you know, Windows 8 on some of them. They had difficulties. Our server was 2012 main server and there were just a lot of problems. So we fixed that. We bought basic low-end Dell business PCs, you know, 800 belts a piece. We fixed that. The server, it needed to be replaced. And the PD needs a separate server to be legal and fully legal. And so that for this audit that Mr. Tidwell is handling, he needs a dedicated server in the PD building secure. We have it here upstairs in a virtual server so that we can't, you know, there's a firewall between the two so that we can't see those files. But legally, it needs to go over there. I talked with the folks at PC Cable who are IT providers and they're experts. Troy is, he brought them in years ago, years ago now, but he brought them in because they are, that's what they do. They're police security survivors. I talked with Mark, the owner today. And we're taking and moving an old server over to over there and they'll have a dedicated PC. So it's in your office, it's locked up, it's secure and nobody can get to it. That will prevent us from having to say, yeah, well, this is secure over here and what it really is. So it's a good deal. So we'll be legal on that, Mr. Tidwell. Musical court software was out of date. Very out of date, creative issues, warrants, citations, payments, collecting payments. Again, the old computer. We upgraded that. These are all basic Dell $800 business PC. There's nothing, no gaming PCs. That software has been updated to now it's a cloud-based software. And it works downstairs, upstairs, wherever she goes, we can, she can use it versus coming down here with a piece of paper, running upstairs to make a payment, going back downstairs during court. So that's, we have credit card machine down here. She handles all that. It's all cloud-based. Utility building, exactly the same thing. The software was 2012. If you looked at it, you would be amazed. We've updated that. What we had to do then was it was a manual entry in the accounting system. So we would take a credit card payment. It would go to the processor. It'd come back in a couple of days. We'd have manual entry to the accounting system. And meanwhile, that person might have had their water cut off, but really they had paid two days before. But we didn't know about it because it wasn't in the system yet. It wasn't to us yet. And so now all of that is instantaneous. You swipe it, you pay online. It goes into the cloud software. It comes straight there and it goes straight into our accounting system. So there's no double entry, no manual entry, no errors, which we'll talk about in a little bit, how many errors there were. Monthly water bill processing every month. Ms. Anderson, we spent two days printing bills, folding bills, stuffing bills in the envelopes and postage, placing postage. Changed all of that. Now, now it's really not, it's really not, but now we that will be handled automatically. Your bills will come and we're trying to get everybody to go over to you know, email, email bills versus paper bills. We're at about 200, 200 or so people doing that. And so we're trying to get everybody to change over to that so we don't have to print 500 bills every month. But it turns out that this saves us money versus what we were doing. And so saving money is, and making customers service better is really the only way to go. That is cloud-based, straight into the accounting system permitting. We've already talked before about our permitting process. It's, we had a lot of complaints about that. We had a lot of delays because our, we had a part-time inspector that only worked two days a week. And everything, everything up there was manual with permitting. I mean, manual to the point of, you know, paper and writing it down and putting it, it totally manual. Now it's completely automatic. Yet also it's a cloud-based system, a portal where you, the homeowner or the contractor will apply for a permit. Everything is, it's automatically sent to an inspector and inspector is available at a mutually agreed time, seven days a week. At a mutually agreed time. So you're not waiting for a four-hour period on a Tuesday or a four-hour period on a Wednesday to get a permit to get an inspector out. Your plans are all reviewed online before. So you know what you have to do before you even have to interface with the, directly with a an inspector, a human. And that process has been completely revamped. And people are very, very happy with their contractors. There are some homeowners right now that are not too happy. They miss Latney. Apparently he would let them do certain things a little bit off course and the new inspectors won't. And so I have had a complaint about that. And the fees are collected and they're automatically put into the system and they're automatically integrated with QuickBooks, our accounting system. So that again, there's no double entry. There's no chance of human error when you take a bill and type it in and transpose a number or something. And so that's a much, much better way. This particular building, the Coleman Room had turned, we remodeled upstairs three years ago. And during that remodel, the Coleman Room turned into a junk room. And I mean, a little junk room. I remember I had a meeting in there with Troy and Elaine and a couple of accountant people. We had to move box, slide them down the table and we were cramped in a little bitty area of the table. And when we left that meeting in October, I told Troy, man, that was embarrassing. And he agreed. And when I I came back in April, it was still like that. But I cleaned it out, got a moving company come out. And as you saw, if you were here last, last meeting, that room is now, it's a great overflow room. It's a great budget meeting room again. It's a community room. I know that the homeowners association by all forces is already using or scheduled to use it. I'm not sure when their meeting is. We have a ladies group that is, it will be meeting in there every, every week, every month. They have that. A month. Anyway, they got some kind of a quilting group or something going in there. So they're using it. So it's a community asset again. And now we splashed, we literally did use a bucket and a brush on this room, just put a fresh coat of paint on it. It had the carpets cleaned, fix the lights. It was dark in the dungeon in there. We replaced some of the fixtures, replaced all the walls. Now it's, it glows in the dark. Roof on the restroom was damaged in Hurricane Burl. And it was still damaged in April. We managed to get it fixed in June. There was a big, I saw criticism of me for cutting down some trees out here. That's interesting. There was a pin oak that was, had been struck by lightning and was almost laying on the power lines over there. And so I had Troy, I said, hey Troy, come take a look at this, see if it needs to come down. And he looked at it and he said, yeah, that, that needs to come down. It's going to fall on those power lines. So we took that tree out. In that process, we found three of our large trees that had pine bark beetles. We had to take them out so they don't spread. We're trying to save what we can. If anybody thinks that I cut a pine tree down, they don't know me. I just really nearly cut a pine tree down. I'm the only one really that uses that park. I use it every day. I built it. It's a great park. You go sit and reflect. Don't think about life, think about what's going on. And it's just a beautiful place and there's no way I would have cut down trees that didn't need to be cut down. This doesn't happen. And we had one, we trimmed one tree that was, the branches were on top of public works. Banging every time it wind blew, banging on that. And so we had to clean that up. Now, I'll get into accounting. And this is problematic. Our accounting books were a complete mess. Mr. Hornberg, they were a complete mess. The cash account balances weren't accurate. We literally had to log into the bank daily to see what the actual funds were. I had a negative 1 million and one count, a positive 3 million and one. It was just, just all over the place. Bank reconciliations hadn't been done for three years. That's something you learn when your grandma gets you your first bank account. Haven't been done in three years. The last completed financial audit was for fiscal year 2122. I told Ms. Ramos all of this on her very first day on the job as mayor pro town, and I think she was a little surprised. She hasn't asked me a single time how we are in that process since then.
Haven't asked because we got into a great debate over Gant. And so I've decided to be silent for a couple more moments.
We got into a debate over Mr. Gant in August. This was in May. But anyway, I've been asking questions about that audit for two years. You know, where are we in the process? What's doing? I kept being told, we're getting close. We're closed. We're closed. We're closed. Last October, I asked for a meeting. Like I said, we had to move stuff out of the way. We met out there and we put target dates in there. The, we agreed to a timeline. We had a meeting, that meeting included Troy, Elaine, Stephanie Harris, who's our auditor and Cheryl Hunter, who was the accountant that Troy hired to help us with that. In that meeting, we agreed to a timeline for the 2223 audit, to be ready to be audited in January. Because in October, and then you got all the holidays. I just, you know, I just wanted, okay, that's not very aggressive. But you know, at least we'll be done, right? Well, they missed that timeline. When Troy turned this over to me on April 22nd, I had a meeting with the auditor, Stephanie Harris, the next day. And at that meeting, she informed me that because of a lack of confidence in our books, it would no longer be our auditor. It's an auditor that had been with us nine years. And then she gave me, she actually gave me a list of audit firms that I could ask. Basically, I came back and I told Troy and Elaine, hey, we got fired by our auditor. Is what happened. She also told me at the meeting, at that particular meeting, that the accountant that they hired, Cheryl Hunter, was done. She didn't want to help us anymore. Wouldn't respond. On May 10th, Saturday, so I had a meeting with Cheryl on April 30th. I got her and I convinced her, I said, look, I'm going to get this chance. I'm going to make this work. Work with me. And so she agreed to, okay. And worked with Bernie and Diane and Elaine. Then on May the 10th, I got a, Saturday evening, I got an email from her, copied. Actually, the email went to Elaine saying, hey, what happened? I'm locked out. QuickBooks is all changed. I can't get, you know, and you know, after that, on May 12th, we had a personnel change in the office. I risked placing, I had to get a bookkeeper. And then I decided to outsource it all because this happened about every time we changed personnel. This happened. 2018, 2021 with Karen and then when Elaine came in, 2023. It's just, so I found a firm called Axian Road, out of Lufkin, large firm to clean this up. And outsource all of our accounting except payables. It doesn't make sense. So we have very few payables. It's easy to do checks, mail-in checks and all that. And speaking of checks, I want to make one point here. When I started doing this, I stopped signing checks. Felicia and Troy sign all checks. I was not comfortable with having access to QuickBooks and writing checks and signing them. And so I asked Felicia to handle that part of it and she has done almost all of them. There are times when she couldn't make it. And so I would sign it and Troy. And so Troy signed 100% of the checks and Felicia about 95, 96, something like that, most of the checks. Because I don't want any part of that when I'm playing the accounting system. So I want that to be clear. So I outsourced it to Axian Road. We had a target date for a cleanup and ready to schedule an audit. We had the target date of August 31st. We missed that date by one day. So on September 2nd, last week, I was informed that we're ready to go. So the audit for 2223 is going to be scheduled for mid-October. 2324 audit preparation should go much faster because all the bank recs are done. What was happening was they would just put journal entries in, balance stuff. It's like I said, bank recs weren't done for three years. So there were all kinds of journal entries. Like I said, it's all manual entry and so it would go into wrong accounts. When they, when people paid their ticket, it might go into this account. When people pay the water bill, it might go into that account, it might go into this account. So all of that had to be cleaned up. And the 202324 will go faster. But holidays, so we're probably looking at mid-January to end of January to schedule that and hopefully get that audit done by mid-February. And then the current year audit preparation is going on currently. We're doing both at the same time. But we're doing both at the same time. A target audit for that scheduling is March the first. And we'll then be up to date on audits. Why is that important? Well, it's pretty important to know that your books can be trusted. It really is. If our books had been like this, when we wanted to repair our infrastructure, we could have never got the loans. It wouldn't have happened. For the last three months, I've been working with Texas or Development Board because they want to know where their certified audits. We borrowed four and a half million from them. And now they want to, you're you're supposed to send them the audit results every year so they can keep up with that. So I've been working with them. They've been very polite. Uh, we we work together. I call them frequently and okay, this is what we're doing. This is how close we are. We're we're getting this done. It uh, and I can see some of you out there are just like gassed and some of you really don't care, apparently. This is important. If if we don't have confidence in the finances of the city, the residents don't have confidence in us, it's it's just rolls right downhill. And 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 so this had to be done. I had to outsource this stuff. I had to hire an outside accountant. You know, we cannot borrow money. We can't do anything right now if we were to need it. We don't need it fortunately, but if we were, we couldn't do it. It's it's just basic incompetence is what I what I found. No bank recs, journal entries used, no accountability on anyone. This stuff was just let to roll and roll and roll. And and so you know, I I wanted to put the last five months into context. I've worked five months, forty, fifty hours a week with no pay. Ed, you're gonna love it if you do it with no pay. And and it's uh it it it's 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 been a challenge. Like I said, I resigned on the seventh, Troy resigned on the ninth, I came back on the eleventh. Uh, and I was peripherally aware of some of these audit problems. As I said, I talked to Troy frequently, where are we, where are we? And uh, so I was peripherally aware of it. I did not have access to QuickBooks. I did not have access to all of this. So I didn't know the depth of the problems at all, completely unaware. And um the 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 incompetence and lack of accountability is unacceptable. And so whomever council picks as the next city manager, accountability has to be first. And competence has to be one A and one B. Because if you're not competent at this job, the same thing is going to happen again. And 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 that's why I was pushing so hard for someone that had competence. So who, council has talked about hiring some, they they don't need someone with com it's experience. I hope you don't go that direction. I really do. I think that it's just critical that you get this cleaned up and that that you 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 allow this to happen. This time schedule that I laid out for you, we have a very, very good accounting system. Accountants working on this. We have revamped servers. We have everything flowing into the right accounts. I've done an awful lot of work. My goal was to make the next city manager, give them a clean slate so that they could be successful. And I've done that and I'm happy with it. I you do all the noise, it doesn't, like I said, it's political. You know, it's gonna happen. People are gonna criticize me. That's just life. Uh, I don't take it personal. Uh, it feels personal sometimes, but I don't take it personal, you know? I try to avoid it when I can. Um, y'all are just I I think this was I knew this, we're just citizens involved, wanting to be involved and 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 wanting to right by the city. And I really think that that that's what's happening out there. There's just a conflict of 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 what people know and what people don't know. So hopefully what I've laid out to you tonight will help you understand what we've been going through. And I, you know, I I really couldn't bring that to 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 you before I had confidence in um, what we were doing. Because then you would lose confidence in everything. I can tell you now that uh uh I can go into QuickBooks right now, I can type in, I can open it up and the bank account number is gonna match the bank account number minus the checks. A reconciliation, go figure. And 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 so that's all done. It's all complete. Uh, we're 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 much better at getting expenditures into the right accounts versus just putting them where we have a little money here and there. So we know uh, we know what we're spending, we know it's over budget, what's under budget. Uh, we're very close to uh to to all of that. So my original intention when I came back on the eleventh, as as Mr. Humber said, that's weird, you came back. I I agree. And uh but it was necessary. And so my original intention was to stay until a new city manager was was on board. City council decided to reverse the one that we hired. So I need to focus on my health right now. I've put in five months. I I think I've 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 done my duty. Uh, I've done my duty. And so I I I know y'all are fixing to clap and yell and and be really happy. But I am going to be resigning, but I'm not gonna resign tonight. But I will resign. A couple of things I need to finish up. And uh, I will inform the city secretary when I'm ready. It certainly will be before the next regular meeting in October. Uh, most likely before the next regular meeting in September. Uh, now that you've scheduled a regular meeting for September twenty second, that's probably a reasonable time. Uh, what's gonna happen then is the council is gonna fill some, select someone to fill my term, the rest of my term. It goes until May. I wasn't planning on running again, obviously I resigned already once, so uh the mayor pro tempel does not automatically fill the term. That's not the way it works. Mayor Pro Tempel will run the meeting in which a mayor is selected. The council does not have to select someone that is on council. Anyone in the community can 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 ask council to make them mayor. And and I I I hope by doing this, they all do that. Some people that 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 what I would like to see in that role are competent. And and you gotta have a tough backbone, let me tell you. It's a, you have no power. The mayor in this city has no power. The only reason I had any duties to do at all is because Troy resigned. And he was city manager until July the eighth and then uh became the police chief on July the ninth. So that's all. And and let me tell you this, I'll I'll just close with this and then we'll uh make a motion to adjourn. I have been honored to be the mayor of this city. It's an honor. It's not a duty. Uh, it's not a a joy, it's not a, it's not something I don't like. I do try, I've been honored. I I can count on one hand the number of meetings I missed in ten years. Uh, and I would count on no hands the number of meetings where I've come unprepared. I take this seriously. And 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 I, you know, I I, when I ran for office the first time, my only goal was to leave the city in a better place than when I started. And I guarantee you that this city is in a better place than it was twenty fifteen. Many people, many people have helped me along the way. Jerome, my friend, became my friend, my buddy, my uh council buddy. What a guy. And and he he worked hand in hand with me for for nine years. And then uh, I can, you know, Ricky Bowles, Richard Adam, Mike Wheeler, Nancy Snow, Ron Hoskins, Bo Bunker, Felicia, Paul West. And you haven't had much time with Johnny or Chuck, but I know that they have the best interest of the city at heart as well. And they have all helped me. But I'll tell you what, over the last five months, I've learned that Bernie and Diane and Ray are awesome employees. And I suggest the next city manager take advantage of that. I have thrown, and they can tell you, I have thrown a thousand things at them at one time. And they have not backed down from any of those challenges. We have completely changed that office up there and it's because they're hard. They've done hours of training, hours and hours and hours of training to make this transition smooth and easy. And every single time we, now I'll tell you what, there are some software implementations that don't go well. Everything that we've done up there has gone very smoothly. No hiccups, no complaints from customers, uh, customers being you. And seamless, and that's because of the hard work of Diane and Bernie. And 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 let me tell you, Ray is one heck of a worker. Uh, you give him a job, he's older than me, he outworked me three days on Sunday. It's just, he he's an amazing, amazing worker. But they are all three people with integrity. With integrity. And that's what, that's what drives this process. And uh if you get an opportunity upstairs one day, just walk up there and say thank you, you know? Tell them thank you. Bring them sweets because they like to eat. I'm telling them, they like sweets, so bring them sweets. And uh, well, it's been a pleasure, folks. This will be the last meeting I run. I have not resigned tonight. But but Bernie will uh will let you know when. Like I said, I got a couple of things to wrap up. But it's been a real pleasure and an honor. And and I really appreciate every single one of you that is in this audience and that's online and for the 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 passion you have for this community. And I hope that you 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 continue to be that passionate, continue to serve, get involved. We have committees that we need, Sid's been on the committee for eight years now. He's, he knows, get involved. We we have openings on on these committees and we need help. Run for council, run for mayor. It's uh, I ran for council before I ran for mayor, but you know, it's uh, council has a vote, mayor don't. So anyway, I'll take with motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Motion from Mr. Mitchell, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Thank you for your show.
Thank you. All of the favors say aye. And we are adjourned as of seven twenty one P M. Thank you all for coming out.